The October eighteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the Norfolk County Commissioners to Order. On Wednesday, March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three, Governor Healy signed into law Chapter Two of the Acts of Twenty Twenty-Three, an act making appropriations for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, which includes a clear extension of the option to hold our public bodies, for public bodies to hold their remote meetings by suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty, A, Section Twenty. That action was effective immediately extending the current option for remote meetings through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. I'm going to ask everyone to stand and join me in saluting the floor. Pledge of Leagues and Testify the United States of America and the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, and every justice for all. Thank you. I call the roll. Commissioner Collins, present. Commissioner Shea, present. We have a quorum. Commissioner Chairman Shea, I'd like to make a motion that we take item number thirteen out of order as everyone is present. Okay. Without objection, we're going to move to item number thirteen on the agenda today is contract awards. It's a awarding of a contract for an audit, outside audit for fiscal years twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four of the county of Norfolk. I'm going to ask Director Cronin to open up and introduce our vendor, and then we'll try to bring, put this together today, and I think we're ready for a vote and we're ready to sign up for the next three years. Director Cronin.
Thank you, Commissioner Shea. Very briefly, I'm going to turn it over to you, Nancy. The county has put out to bid on September twelfth, two thousand twenty-three requests for proposals relative to county auditing services. Last Friday, as a result of the bids we received, the county procurement team held a meeting to score the response of Powers and Sullivan. They score very favorably and are recommended for this particular contract opportunity. Nancy will go through the terms of the contract now, and with us also on the Zoom is Renee Davis, who is with Powers and Sullivan. I'm sure she'd like to make some comments, too, so.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll ask Nancy to take it from here and give you the details.
Yes, it is recommended to order contract Powers and Sullivan for the audit for fiscal years twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. The amount will be fifty thousand dollars here, all-inclusive, including a single audit if needed for the county. And the spec was sent to four vendors, and Powers and Sullivan were the only respondent.
Okay. Thank you, Nancy. Hello, Renee. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning. Good morning. I'm gonna say good morning. Good afternoon, everybody. Yeah, we're really excited for the opportunity to work with the county, and it's funny that you mentioned the next, the next three years. We're actually like partway through fiscal year twenty-four, so there's, we understand that there's some catch-up to do, and there's some timing considerations. We've talked with John. We understand what the county is looking for, and we're really looking forward to the opportunity to work with you.
Well, thank you. I, I unfortunately had a previous working relationship with Powers and Sullivan because they were the outside auditors for the city of Quincy in this, in my last four or five years as city clerk before I retired, and that's six or eight years ago, and they're still the auditor for the city of Quincy, and I get rave reviews. And I notice of our twenty-eight cities and towns, you represent, I believe, at a quick glance here, Westwood, going up, Dedham, Melton, Braintree.
Yep.
So it's a pretty well-known group among outside auditors. This in, in my short time here, we've had three outside auditors. And the law requires it, and I think, I think it's a good fit, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Collins, any questions or comments at all?
I'm all set. Just one, one comment, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Director Cronin.
Folks may recognize Powers and Sullivan and the relationship they've had with the county through the American Rescue Plan Act. Several years ago, the county contracted along with Clifton Larson for Powers and Sullivan to conduct reviews of eligible applications associated with that grant. Clifton Larson is the primary reviewer of applications on that platform. Clifton Larson does the bulk of the work. The second level approvers are Powers and Sullivan. They are under contract for all counties in Massachusetts to perform this act. They've done great work. I'm actually quite familiar with Renee. We've been colleagues now for over two years. So as a result of this action today, we'll await notice from Powers and Sullivan that they are resigning from the Level Two responsibility of handling Norfolk County's ARPA awards going forward. I believe they intend to continue the relationship and a second level approvers for the other counties going forward. So we've had some conversations about the, the, the functional impact of this on the ARPA grants. It's relatively minimal. Today, the county commissioners ignore award over one point seven million dollars in ARPA grants, which will take us well over ninety-two million dollars out the door. We are in the back end of reviewing applications, and functionally, we'll be in this business for about another fourteen months. So suffice to say, most of the work has been completed relative to the Norfolk County Awards. With some amount of work to go, we will look for a, another second-level auditing firm to fill in the void left through this resignation. But I just wanted folks to understand that there will be a sort of a firewall between our auditors going forward and their role with ARPA. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Last call on the appointment of an outside auditor for the fiscal years twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. Any other comments? Any questions?
All set.
All set?
Yeah.
We need a motion, Nancy, correct?
Yes.
To accept?
I'll make a motion to accept the three-year contract proposal with Powers and Sullivan as proposed. So moved.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
We're all set, Nancy. We look forward to working. I mean, Renee, we look forward to working with everyone. We're gonna sign that. We already did sign it.
Well, I signed it.
You didn't sign it, but.
Thank you. Thank you. We're really looking forward to it. We know ARPA is going to be a big part of what's going on with your audit, and I know you have some time crunches, so we're gonna work with, with John and his team to make sure we can meet your deadlines.
Thank you, Renee.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much. Yep. Okay, back to our regular agenda. Item number three. Minutes open session meeting of October eleventh, twenty twenty-three for approval. Motion. I'll second it. All in favor? Aye. It is a vote. Number four, minutes of the open session meeting of October eleventh, twenty twenty-three for approval and hold the release.
For the executive session. I'll make that motion.
Executive session.
Hold, sorry. Release as the discretion of the chairman.
And I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. I might say here at the outset that Commissioner Stady is not with us this week. He is at a meeting in Washington, D.C., and working on our behalf, so. We'll see Commissioner Stady next week. Number five, appointments. We have no appointments today. Number six, public comment. Each meeting, we have a meeting. We have a section hour meeting devoted to public comment, whether people come in attendance or out in Zoom land. So Director Cronin, do you have anybody with public comment today?
I have one, one piece of correspondence from a Dedham resident, Ms. Carle Foley, who has copied the county on correspondence that she sent along to the Dedham Select Board on October eleventh. Ms. Foley and I have had a couple of conversations. She's reduced her concerns to writing and has passed them along. I believe she spoke to the board as well last week. This is relative to improving the pedestrian cross, crossing, crosswalk zones here on High Street. There are three crosswalks on this block. Ms. Foley is calling the town to fund improved signage, if not illuminated signs, to alert motorists of pedestrians that are entering these crosswalks. So I will speak in a bit about a recent Zoom call that we had with the town of Dedham on ARPA-related matters, but I will note here that during that phone call, I confirm the town manager has received Ms. Foley's message, and his board is evaluating the possibility of putting in strobed flashing crossing signals for pedestrians to initiate to cross High Street. The town is looking for us to help them prioritize which of the three crossing, crosswalks, I should say, are the most prominent. We've passed along some information to them, and hopefully they can find some funding to achieve some improvements on this strip. But I wanted to convey to the commissioners today, Ms. Foley, who you all know is a very active neighbor and advocate for county business, I think brings up a very important public safety message, very well done with the town of Dedham, so we'll work collaboratively to hopefully arrive at a solution quite soon.
Okay, well, that's a germane subject, because as you said, we delved in on this with the town and looking at alternatives, and it's certainly an issue. I mean, just even as we're speaking, yes, someone's going by, and with their sirens on, and then, and the street is such a main street to the town. It almost seems that to get anywhere down there, you have to go on High Street. You know, we use, people cross at all points there, and it's, it's, it's a great subject. Everybody wants to work with the town.
Other than that, that's all I have, sir.
Okay. Any last call for open session? Public comment. Any public comment? Thank you. Number seven, old business. We have none. Number eight, personnel matters for consideration. We have none today. Number nine, payroll and expense warrants. Commissioner Collins.
Thank you. We have a long warrant list today. So the first is a motion for twenty-four dash fifteen payroll of the county in the amount of one hundred fifty-six thousand, eight hundred eighty-four dollars and sixty-eight cents. So moved.
Motion made seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Next.
The next one is twenty-four dash fifteen subsection eight. Payroll of the school in the amount of three hundred sixty-eight thousand, one hundred thirty dollars and sixty, sixty cents. So moved.
Motion made seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Next.
The next one is warrant ten dash three dash twenty-four, expense of the county in the amount of ninety-nine thousand, five hundred ninety-six dollars and thirty-seven cents. So moved.
Motion made seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. Next.
The next one is twenty-four dash oh four, expense of the school in the amount of three hundred and four thousand, four hundred thirty-five dollars and eighty-six cents. So moved.
Motion made seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Next.
Next is ten dash oh three dash twenty-four A, expense of the county in the amount of seven hundred eighty-two dollars. So moved.
Motion made seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
The next bunch of warrants are for ARPA awards. The first is twenty-four dash eleven, ARPA Dedham in the amount of fifty-two thousand, nine hundred forty-five dollars and nine cents. So moved.
Motion made seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
The next is twenty-four dash eleven, ARPA Dedham in the amount of eighty-seven, eighty-seven thousand, six hundred fifty dollars. So moved.
Motion made seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
The next one is twenty-four dash eleven, ARPA Dedham in the amount of twenty-nine thousand dollars. So moved.
Motion made seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Next one is twenty-four dash eleven, ARPA Dedham in the amount of forty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. So moved.
Motion made seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
And the last one for twenty, for Dedham, twenty-four dash eleven, ARPA Dedham in the amount of three hundred fifty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. So moved.
Motion made seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Thank you.
The next one is twenty-four dash eleven, ARPA Dover in the amount of forty thousand dollars. So moved.
Motion made seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Next is twenty-four dash eleven, ARPA Braintree in the amount of five hundred seventy-three thousand, three hundred ninety-eight dollars and forty-eight cents.
Motion made seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
The next one is twenty-four dash eleven, ARPA Braintree in the amount of four hundred ninety-eight thousand, six hundred twenty-six dollars and ten cents. So moved.
Motion made seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
And the last ARPA, and the last item on the warrant list is also the last ARPA item, twenty-four dash eleven, ARPA Medfield in the amount of twenty-six thousand, six hundred ninety-nine dollars. So moved.
Motion made seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Thank you. That concludes the payroll and expense warrants for today. We're gonna go further, the further discussion. The number eleven, ARPA warrants for approval. We're gonna do one each, each as we just approved them officially. We're gonna do one each individually. Director Cronin.
Thank you, Commissioner. As you just mentioned, the commissioners have approved nine ARPA requests. Most of them from the town of Dedham, a total of five, I believe. This past week, the town of Dedham contacted us to not only follow through and thank us for the processing of these grants, but also to determine what the road ahead looks like. As the commissioners may know, the grant agreements associated with each community's involvement expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. That's an important date. It was designed to be six months prior to the end of the obligation period to give each county, as the other counties followed suit with the same design, each county the time to reset and redistribute any unused funds and optimize the spending associated with the grant. Many communities, now Dedham is included, are awakening to this looming deadline, and they were wondering how does that play against their available allotment? Dedham, for example, has a total of four point four million dollars that are allotted. I think through today, they will be close to two million dollars awarded. So they're not quite halfway, and they wanted to get a sense of what the county's plan is. I think I've mentioned before, but I'll begin to mention this more often as we get closer to January. We intend to, through the county commissioners, send a notice to every Norfolk County community on, that's receiving ARPA, a timeline for the closure of the award period. Right now, we're envisioning this message to go out in January. It will require every community to provide the commissioners, commissioners with a memo that describes the plan that they intend to follow to accomplish the obligations associated with the grants. We, as we approach the end of June, will be engaging communities that are left with available funds for expenditure before the end of December. Those communities will have to sign new grant agreements against the approved plans. I think I mentioned last week that to date, approximately ten communities out of the twenty-eight have reached their full allotment. So approximately one-third are sort of out of the game right now. You can't rule out providing more resources to them if the commissions decide to do that. But effectively, two-thirds remain, and we hope to work with all of them, the remaining eighteen, leading up to that June timeframe, so that we can understand their expectations for applying for and expending funds associated with the grant. Dedham was relieved to hear that there's some flexibility associated with this. There are terms within the grant agreement, which led them to believe that all spending would be stopped at June thirtieth. And I clarified with them that the, the intention of the program is to allow them for awarded funds to use the obligation period all the way up to the end of December and, and to obligate the funds. And then after that, two more years to spend it against awarded funds. If they're not awarded and the allotment is open, that's what we need the plan for. So there's a lot of work to do, starting in January with the notice. And in addition to that, Mr. Buckley is at the Norfolk County Managers Meeting right now. I've asked him to convey a message that the Treasury has provided additional guidance to communities relative to three new areas for options of use for ARPA funds. Number one is emergency release, relief from natural disasters. Number two, surface transportation projects. And number three, Title One projects. We've asked Clifton Larson to develop a memorandum to us so that we can share with our communities how these new spending categories play. It's important to note for anyone listening that access to these funds will be effective as of the date that the Treasury allowed these new categories to be effective. They don't go back to March twentieth, twenty twenty-two. So we'll hopefully give communities a broader use of funds over the remaining fourteen months. And this information is currently being shared with the county managers. We, we do intend to make it more official through memorandum by the end of this month when we hear from Clifton Larson. So that is the broad ARPA update. I do, if, if it is your discretion, Mr. Chairman, but given the fact that there are nine awards, I'm happy to go through each one and read what, what the award was for. Is that, is that your desire at this point? Okay. So the first one is from the town of Dedham. That's forty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. It was an advance under the public health category. This would provide the Dedham Police Department to hire a contracted law enforcement clinical support physician. In particular, this role will occur through FY twenty-four. It's the funding for that particular item. The next is twenty-six thousand, six hundred ninety-nine awarded to the town of Medfield, who again has been through this process prior to this, this particular award is also an advance for Zoom licenses under the category Supporting Public Health. The town of Medfield is looking for funding to cover their application for the two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three Zoom invoice period. The third one is twenty-nine thousand dollars to the town of Dedham. One of five today. This is also an advance under Public Health. This would allow the town to purchase software to manage the town's ongoing grant-funded programs, whereas the COVID nineteen pandemic exacerbated many issues with the town's residents, including substance abuse and mental health issues. The Dedham Organization for Substance Awareness is a grant-funded coalition that uses evidence practices to decrease substance abuse in the community. The Health Department currently uses integrated grant management software. These funds will be used to purchase an updated version. The next one is fifty-two thousand, nine hundred forty-five, also to the town of Dedham. By the way, with today's approval of fifth, five grants, Dedham's total number of grants approved is sixteen.
Wow.
This item is reimbursement for funds under the Economic Impact category. This is to provide the town of Dedham with funds to offset the cost of the Gould Park project. This project made improvements to the park that respond to the needs of disproportionately impacted communities by promoting healthier living environments. The next one was three, five hundred seventy-three thousand, three hundred ninety-eight dollars and forty-eight cents. This one is to the town of Braintree.
Braintree.
This is a reimbursement under the Public Health item. This would, this is a rather complicated one. Braintree submitted payroll associated with mental health services. I will read the, drop the, the program description. In recognition that pre-existing health, economic, and social disparities contributed to disproportionate pandemic impacts in certain communities, the final rule provided a broad list of enumerated eligible uses, including building stronger communities through investments, addressing additional educational disparities, and promoting healthy childhood envi, environments. Under the Public Health section, recipients could also provide services to address health disparities and increase access to health and social services. These funds were used to reimburse the town of Braintree for their various mental health services workers. The next one is four hundred ninety-eight thousand, six hundred twenty-six dollars, ten cents, also to the town of Braintree. I believe this is an identical grant. It covers a different time period. Economic impact is reimbursement for healthcare workers in the town of Braintree during that same time period. The next one is forty thousand dollars to the town of Dover. This is an advancement under the Revenue Replacement category. It provides for water study technical assistance relative to there was a complete engineering contract with CEM Associates, which was attached. The funded, the funding was awarded via a grant from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and seventy-five thousand dollars from the town of Dover. With this project exempt from Chapter Thirty-B and procurement statutes to comply with its own procurement requirements, the town issued a request. And they are seeking these funds to cover the cost of undertaking a map study of the town's water infrastructure, total of forty thousand dollars as an advancement. The next one is three hundred fifty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars to the town of Dedham. This is an advance under Infrastructure Water Sewer. This would provide engineering services to the Engineering Corporation relative to the High Street, Common Street, Village Ave, Culvert Design. The last one is eighty-seven thousand, six hundred fifty dollars to the town of Dedham. This is an advancement under the Economic Impact to provide funds for making improvements to the Condon Park. The improvements will include a water feature, which will increase the use of the park, especially in the hotter months, increased mental health, ability, access to proper outdoor recreation. Funds we have awarded to Weston Sampson, who was the low bidder for this particular grant. One item I do want to call attention to that we've discussed this past week with our peers in the other county community, counties, county organizations, is approximately three-quarters of the funds you've awarded to date are under the Advanced category. Okay, so take ninety million-ish, about seventy-five percent are for award programs that are anticipated. The balance obviously would be through reimbursements. Those are costs that are going back to the town. With such a large portion of advanced grants, we have a fair amount of work to do to reconcile the activity and, and, and condition of each of those grants before the end of June, because we want to make sure the communities are not just sitting on the money, anticipating awarding it, or awarding a portion of it, or, you know, keeping a balance because they're done with the project, but they don't know what to do with the money. That's the area where we're gonna spend a lot of time with Mr. Buckley, Mr. Galvin, trying to help the communities rate back those unused funds so that we can get them back to them before the end of the grant period. So when you hear advance versus reimbursement, we've encouraged communities to seek reimbursement. It's easier for everyone. The advanced piece, and because of so much of it, will create a fair amount of work for us in the coming year to reconcile the balance of the grant. That is all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone out here in Zoom land that has any interest in these ARPA awards for today? I don't know if there's anyone from the various towns sometimes. Okay. This concludes ARPA awards for today, and thanks for the update. We need it. One-thirty bid openings. We have none. That's number twelve. Number thirteen, we awarded the contract to Powers and Sullivan. Number fourteen, report of the county director. Director Cronin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Earlier, I mentioned a call with the town of Dedham to go over ARPA readiness, preparation, and looking ahead. It was a very productive call. They've got a solid team of people that are working on their grants. In addition to the crosswalk I mentioned, there was one other category that came into the conversation unexpectedly. It would appear the town of Dedham is very interested in joining the Waits and Measures Program, which Norfolk County has recently launched. Mr. Buckley has already engaged town manager Leon Goodwin to get Dedham into the space where if they are serious enough, they will be asked to sign a contract and get the, the program going for them. So an encouraging development for a local community that could use our, our help. Commissioner Stady, who's not here today, helped coordinate a, a visit with the county commissioners from the Norfolk County Sheriff. We are planning a, a meeting with the Norfolk County Sheriff to discuss possible collaboration on programs and initiatives. We expect this to be sometime on or about November fifteenth. I'd like to thank Tara Defonso, who did an exceptional job completing the facility safety survey provided by the Commonwealth Trial Division, Trial Court Division. They had requested an update on each of our facilities readiness and conditions for safety reasons. There were several findings which our facility managers are current, our facility manager is currently working on with his staff. But Tara did a great job, and it was submitted to the trial courts last Thursday. We were expecting Carl Minor to be with you today to give you an update on the Wallston Recreational Facility. Carl's asked for a one-week reprieve to gather more information and be ready. You can expect to see him a week from today. I did speak to, Commissioner Stady was here, I did speak with the, the multi-county group about the December meeting of the County Commissioners Association. We have terminated any interest in going further south in the December meeting, and we're waiting to hear and we're waiting to hear from Bristol to see if they are going to host that meeting. I'll report back as soon as that's confirmed.
Okay. Any other questions, any comments with Director Corona, commissioners?
One other item, um, we have extended an offer to backfill the fiscal specialist role. Uh, that individual is currently in, uh, background. Uh, and as soon as that is completed, we expect, uh, this individual to start on November 6th. Uh, okay, associated with that hire when he clears. That is all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Nice job. Okay. Okay, that pretty much concludes today's agenda. I have number 15, emergency items, the topics the chat did not raise, we anticipate, um, would be discussed. Uh, I have one. In addition to college letter, I have an invitation here from the mayor, Tom Coke, and members of Quincy School Committee inviting us to a dedication ceremony of the Richard de Cristofaro Learning Center, Sunday, October 22nd at 1:00 PM. This is a project that's near and dear to everyone's heart. Uh, it will allow the city of Quincy to take care of their special needs children, um, pretty much exclusively in the city of Quincy, they're not gonna be able, they're not gonna have to, send these children to the various, uh, other facilities throughout the state, which is gonna save the city of Quincy a lot of money. Uh, I talked to the mayor last evening about it. He expects by the second year of operation to be able to invite other Norfolk County communities, particularly surrounding communities of, of Milton, Randolph, Weymouth, uh, to, to use these facilities. So, uh, it's exciting, and it's exciting, uh, because every time you open a new school, it's exciting, but, uh, this school, Aston, received, uh, from the ARPA funds, about 8 million dollars, as you recall, a couple of months ago, and it was enough to put it over the top, so, uh, they can get it open for next year's school. So, uh, we will be present at the ribbon cutting, and it's kind of an, you know, an exciting thing to see this actual program at work. I've had an advanced tour of the school and, you know, the history of it is, it's originally built as a factory. It was the original Howard Johnson's Candy Factory. It's where they made the ketchup, the candy, the orange juice. Um, it was a local employment mecca in this, in the center of the city, including yours truly, who, for a brief time, after I left my first year in college, uh, went there to work, and I emptied, emptied trucks loaded with tomatoes, oranges from the south at seven every morning. I quickly, uh, learned after doing that that I went back to college about nine months later. But it did supply me with a revenue, uh, generator and, and a life lesson. So it's known to everyone as the Howard Johnson's Candy Factory. More recently, Eastern Nazarene College had, had occupied it for their evening program. But the city acquired it back and, and have converted it to the, uh, Dr. Rick de Cristofaro Learning Center. Dr. de Cristofaro is a immediate past superintendent of schools in the city of Quincy, and presently, his exit package includes, he's the president of Quincy College, so he's a, he's a household word in Quincy. And the mayor of the school committee are dedicating the school in honor of him, and it's an exciting time. And the, we were so happy to, as you know, participate in helping them by raising 8 million dollars through ARPA funds, so. Looking forward to it. That pretty much concludes it. I have nothing else. Commissioner Collins, are you all set?
All set.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much. Okay.